Good. All right. Excellent. Thank you. All right. So pursuant to Section 841411 of the Nebraska statutes, notice of this hearing was given on December 4th, 2023. Agenda items are subject to reordering at the discretion of the Board President. Please attend the entire meeting to ensure we're able to hear any discussions. Pursuant to 841411 of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the OSR Omaha School Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees will be held on Thursday, March 7th, 2024, at 4:00 PM in the Board Meeting Room of the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Cummings Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the retirement office at the Teacher Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 841412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Board Meeting Room on the north wall. So with that introduction, Mr. Ryan, if you'd call the roll?
Mr. Born?
Here.
Ms. Erdenberger?
Present.
Ms. Block? Mr. Head?
Present.
Mr. Hirschenbach?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Ray?
Here.
Six present, one absent. Mr. Born?
All right. Mr. Ryan, can you tell me who it was? I didn't, I wasn't able to hear who's not here?
Ms. Block.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion to excuse the absence of Ms. Block?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Erdenberger, second by Mr. Head, Mr. Ryan?
Mr. Born?
Yes.
Ms. Erdenberger?
Yes.
Mr. Head?
Yes.
Mr. Hirschenbach?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. She is excused. The first item on the agenda is public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for the public to address the Board of Trustees with comments and opinions. As a reminder, with last year's passage of LB83 by the Nebraska Legislature, the Board of Trustees is legally obligated to require any member of the public desiring to address the board to identify himself or herself, including an address and the name of any organization you may be representing. Please state and spell your name and state your address for the record at the beginning of your comments. If you have materials you'd like to distribute, please let me know and Mr. Ryan will come and get them from you. With that, is there anyone that would like to address the board this afternoon?
Good afternoon. My name is Roger Ray, spell R-O-G-E-R, R-E-A. My address is 12914 Pacific Street in Omaha, 68154. I'm here representing myself as a retired member of the OSTRS program. First of all, I'd like to say that I'm a little bit surprised that there wasn't a notice in the hallway when I came in this morning about where this meeting is. Usually if the meeting is not in the normal boardroom, there's a notice posted next to the elevator and notice posted outside the retirements office itself. Neither of those notices were there. When I went to the retirement office, they had to search to find a room for this place. So I hope in the future, if you move the meeting, that you put proper notice in the hallways as well as on the agenda itself. I have three things I want to talk about today. I know at the last meeting, Mr. Ryan indicated that they were going to be trying to get additional funding for the cost of living adjustment to the state service identity. I was wondering if that had been accomplished yet. I hope you'll address that during your remarks during the meeting itself. But that cost living adjustment is going to be applied or would be applied, I would imagine, in January. And it's timely for us to know whether or not that'll be a part of the adjustment that's made for January. The second thing I wanted to talk about was the item I raised at the last meeting also. And that was about not having pension statements every month, not getting the copy of the, a paper copy of the check itself. I understand that OSTRS is not going to be in charge of that kind of thing when the transition is made in September. It'll be Empers that does that. I don't know if Empers is going to do that. I hope that they will. But if they don't, I think they should at least follow the rules that Social Security follows. Social Security does not provide a monthly statement about how much you're going to get, but it does tell you when the amount's going to change. It tells you in advance how much your take home is going to change so that you can have a chance to record that in your record, financial records. There are two adjustments that are made in our retirement system every year. One is the medical COLA, which comes in October. The second is the general cost of living, which comes in January. So I think they require either two notices or one notice in advance of October to let them, people know what's going on. And that should be sent to their home addresses as per usual. So I just want to make that as a part of the public record. I know that they're going through the procedures for making the transition now. I want to make sure that that's one of the things that they have discussions of with the state system. The last thing I want to talk about is the COLA itself. The COLA that OSTRS uses is calculated differently from the way the Empers, general COLA is calculated. Empers has a 2.5% automatic COLA. Ours is either 1.5% or 1%, depending upon when you are hired. Empers also has a 1% COLA if you're hired at the same time. And ours went to 1% is 1.5. Theirs is 1% also. But the calculation of that is quite different. The Empers calculation is dependent on CPIW and ours is dependent upon CPIU. Not a major difference, but it's a difference. It's one that probably ought to be attended to as you're making the transition. The second thing that's different is that our COLA is not an annual COLA. It's a lifetime COLA. When I say that, it's an important consideration. Many people, when they look at cost of living, they say, what happened the last 12 months? If the cost of living increased by 4% last, in the last 12 months, they expect a cost of living adjustment of something around 4%. Since our cost of living adjustment is less than the actual cost of living, it's capped at 1.5% for active, for tier one retirees. That means that the cost of living adjustments are not going to keep place with inflation. In some retirement systems, they look at the inflation each year and say, did it exceed the cap? If it exceeded the cap, they give you a COLA. If it did not exceed the cap, they don't give you a COLA. Or they give you some less than, a lesser amount. There's been times when the cost of living actually has gone down, but our retirees continue to get the full 1.5% because the calculation for the retirement system's COLA here is dependent on how does your income now compare with what it was when you retired itself? If there's a gap between how much it went up in the past and how much you actually got, that gap is considered. And if it went down once, but it still didn't drop, get down to the point where you're less than the adjusted cost of living since the time you retired, you get the full 1.5%. I want to make sure that that calculation is part of the calculations that are transferred to Empers. I know that OSTRS has been keeping track of that. I don't think Empers keeps track of that because they calculate their COLA quite differently. I want to make sure that as this transition occurs, that they also look into the lifetime COLA amounts as opposed to just the annual COLA amounts. Those are the three things that I wanted to talk about. If there are questions about them, I'll be glad to respond to questions from the board.
Thanks, Roger. Any questions for Roger?
I don't think we're supposed to present. It's not on the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. I can't answer your question. Sorry, Roger. Thank you.
Thought I'd give it a shot.
I'm used to the legislature. I'm sorry. Is there anyone else who'd wish to address the board this afternoon? All right. Well, that will conclude the public comment section of the agenda. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. The minutes of the last OSTRS Board meeting on Thursday, held on Thursday, September 7th, 2023, have been presented to the trustees for their review. Were there any amendments or correct? Let me get a little, I'll get a little closer. The minutes of the last OSTRS Board of Trustees meeting on Thursday, September 7th, 2023, have been presented to the trustees for their review. Are there any amendments or adjustments or corrections to those minutes? Seeing done, I'd entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Mr. Ryan, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Born?
Yes.
Ms. Erdenberger?
Yes.
Ms. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Head?
Yes.
Mr. Hirschenbach?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Seven ayes.
All right. They are approved. With that next item on the agenda, Mr. Tyler Cummings, Empers Deputy Director, will now provide an update on the OSTRS management transition to Empers.
All right. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Tyler Cummings. I'm the Deputy Director for the Nebraska Public Employees Retirement Systems. I do have another role with Empers is I'm also the Retirement Plan Manager for the OSTRS plan whenever we do take over administration of OSTRS. So that's what really brings me here today. I've been asked to give an update on the transfer itself and kind of where we're at and where we stand today and where we will be come September 1st as well. So today I do plan on talking about, just a little bit about our agency. Then I'll give an update on the project overview along with the project timeline and where we're at and where things stand. We also have a scanning project that is ongoing as well, so I will provide an update on that. Also want to give you a look at what the Empers staffing will look like post-transfer. Then we do have some communication letters that we want to send out and give you an updated, update on that as well. And then finally, just the budget, where we're at and where we project to be once we complete this project. So just a little bit about ourselves. Empers, we currently administer six different retirement plans that cover employees across the state of Nebraska. We, as you probably know, we administer the state employees' plan, the county employees' plan, other than Douglas and Lancaster County. We also administer the plan for the school employees, other than Omaha Public Schools, also State Patrol, judges, and the deferred compensation plan. Right now, our membership stands at around 150,000 planned members. Whenever we do take over administration of OSTRS, that number will jump up to around 165,000 members. We currently have around 60 full-time employees covering a lot of different processes that are ongoing within our agency. And just a little overview of our board, you all probably know how it's made up, but we have nine board members. Six of them are planned members. Two of them are public members. And then the state investment officer serves on our board as the ex officio non-voting member as well. I, I know there's going to be discussion a little bit later about the representative for the OSTRS plan on our board. There will be a future OSTRS member on our board that will represent that plan. So we'll be up to 10 board members and nine of those will be voting come September 1st or a little bit later after that date of 2024. So that's just a little bit about our agency. That infographic you see on the right-hand side, there at the bottom, it displays the membership for each plan. You can see there, the, the school plan is currently close to 100,000 members and by far the largest plan that we administer. The state plan sits at around 31,000 members as well. Then the county is just around 14,000. So whenever we take over OSTRS, membership right now is around 15,000 or so. It will become our third largest plan. So that's kind of where it will sit amongst all the other plans that we currently administer. I know this board's well aware of LB147 that passed in May of 2021. I just wanted to highlight some key developments since that time. In April of 2022, our agency hired a project manager for this project. He's been working on it since that time. Shortly after that, Retirement Plan Manager, which is myself, was hired and then became, began coming up here to the OSTRS office and working with OSTRS staff to learn the plan itself and all the different processes that they, that they do day to day. Then in that same summer of August 2022, an RFP was posted for this project. Then later on in that year, November of 2022, a Retirement Specialist 2 was hired, who then also came up here with me to learn the OSTRS plan as well. Then earlier this year in January, we hired our vendor, Linea Solutions. And then in June 2023, and then just this week, we hired our two Retirement Specialist Ones. And those two people will be dedicated to processing the retirement benefits for this plan. So those are just some of the key staffing developments that have occurred since the passage of LP147. Then I just wanted to highlight the time and energy that we are putting into this plan right now. We meet monthly. There's an OSTRS Steering Committee made up of OPS staff along with Empers staff. We go over certain decisions that need to be made or topics that need to be covered more on a formal basis. And so we meet monthly to discuss those items and anything else that is important to the project. We also meet as an agency or some of our staff internally, meet with Linea twice a week to discuss the requirements of this project. We also meet twice a week as well with Linea and OPS staff to discuss the data migration aspect of this project. And then there are countless meetings, constantly in meetings all the time for this project. But we have internal staff meetings related to this project. There's a project management team that meets as well between our internal staff and Linea. And then just informal conversations we have as well between our staff, OSTRS staff, OPS staff, and Linea. I do expect, as we continue to move forward throughout this project, that things will continue to, I guess, escalate as more work isn't going to be involved to get this transfer completed. But we're already spending a lot of time and energy on this and will continue to do So the next slide here is a project timeline. Briefly, something happening with the PowerPoint. I'll briefly just explain each activity. So the, the first step is the requirements gathering. And what that means is, how does OSTRS process a retirement benefit now? What are the annuity options that are available to members? What types of purchase of service can a member make? So gathering those requirements, documenting those, and then passing those on to Linea to then begin developing those requirements. We're currently on track with the requirements gathering. We have mostly finished it. There are a couple loose ends we need to just clear up, but other than that, we're on track. The development activity, that's where Linea will take the requirements that we have given them, and then they will begin programming them into our system. They're currently taking this activity on right now, right in the middle of it. But once again, we're on track here as well. Data migration, that's where the information that's in PeopleSoft, which is the software OPS uses. Basically, how do we map that and move it into our system? And what that means is if you have an address that maybe is 50 characters, but our system might only have a 40-character limit, how do we handle that type of situation? Right now, we're behind by four weeks or so. So we're in discussions to add more resources to this activity to make sure we don't fall any further behind. But we still feel confident that we aren't going to get any further behind at this point. The next activity you see there is system testing. So once Linea has finished programming a certain requirement, they will then go in and test the system itself. Once they have finished testing the system, they'll send it to the business team, which is my team, to do the user acceptance testing. And that's basically if we were to process a benefit, just making sure our system does everything correctly, that it spits out the right calculations, that it provides the right options for that specific member. We're still on track for those two testing activities right now. Then there's parallel testing that will incorporate the OSTRS staff. So the, the plan there is, all right, we're all going to process the retirements for April, and then we're going to come together, look at the numbers, make sure everything aligns. If there are discrepancies at that point, we'll have to work out what the issue might be, but that's what parallel testing is. And then we have cut over activities. So that's basically if, if someone's going to retire with an effective date of September 1 of 2024, what does that look like for the PeopleSoft system? What does it look for, look like for our system? And what does it look like for the member? Who do they turn paperwork into? Do they turn it into the OSTRS office? Or do they turn it into the Empers office? The work hasn't quite started on, on the cut over plan just quite yet, but we're getting there. But once again, everything's on track. Data migration's a little behind, but we do have contingency built into all these timelines of two months. So right now, we, we feel very confident that things are moving at the pace they need to and don't have any issue meeting that deadline of September 1st of 2024 at this So the next slide here is the scanning project that is ongoing. So historically, OSTRS has stored most of their documents in a paper format. Recently, over maybe the past five years or so, those documents have now been digitized into their system. But obviously, over several decades, there's a lot of paperwork that, that's involved with the retirement process that needs to be scanned into our system. So what we've done is we've contracted with the Secretary of State's Records Management Division for this project. We've worked with them in the past when we did our conversion back in the early 2000s. They did a really good job then, and so far, they've done a great job. We've taken 44 boxes of documents from the OSTRS office to the Secretary of State's office to be scanned. 39 of those boxes have been scanned currently and are actually in our imaging software right now. So we've, as of the end of October, there have been 12,774 documents and 104,405 pages of documents that have been scanned as well. We probably expect another 50 to 60 boxes of documents are, still needed to be taken at this point. Once again, we're ahead of schedule on this. Feel confident that's, all these documents will be scanned by September 1st of 2024. So I, I do just want to mention what the staffing will look like post-transfer. As I mentioned before, there's a Retirement Plan Manager, a Retirement Specialist 2, which is the team lead. Then we have two Retirement Specialist Ones as well that will process the, the benefits for this plan. So we have four people that will be dedicated to the OSTRS plan. We also have a Member Services Department. They are our call center. They help any walk-ins that come into the office. They are also the ones who will schedule an office visit if a, a member wants to come in and talk about their retirement. So we will have a team dedicated to answering phone calls related to the OSTRS plan. We also have an Education Services Department as well. And what they do is they go out and provide seminars to our plan members. And they cover all the other plans, but they will also be conducting seminars for the OSTRS plan as well. So they'll be out there delivering all the information that any members would need to plan their retirement. So I just want to reiterate that we're going to have a lot of resources dedicated to this plan and, and we do want to take care of that membership. So we have plenty of staffing there to, to do that. Here on this next slide, this is mostly a tentative plan at this point, but we want to send out some communications to the OSTRS membership. The first one, we do plan on sending out either this month or in January of next year. Basically, the first one will be pretty generic in, in nature to saying, hey, you know, we're still working on the projects. Just aware we are. We are aware of this, obviously, in that we just wanted to reach out and say, hey, more to come. And so then later that spring of 2024, April, May, we plan on sending out another communication. At that point, we would expect to have some more information regarding the project itself. And then in July, once we get closer to that transition date, that would be our last piece of communication. And then we do expect a lot of information to be provided at that time. If like a member wanted to create an account, our, our goal is to include that with that communication piece. Hey, you go online, here's your number. This is what you need to do to create an account with, on our website. So basically, I just want to let you all know that we will be sending out these communications to the entire plan membership and more details to come at, at this point. All right. This last slide here, I'm not going to go over each category, but I do want to talk about the columns there. Under the budgeted amounts, that total, that 5.3 million that you see, that's what was allocated for this project. Then that next column over is the actual expense that we have incurred. I think this was through November 15th. So we're at just over $1.2 million that we spent so far. Then that last column is the projections. So that's what we expect to spend from November 15th onward to the completion of this project. There at the bottom in the blue, the row, the row with the blue, that is, if you take the actual expense and then add the projections, that's what we expect to spend on this project. Then the row right below that is just the budgeted amounts minus the actual plus the projections. And that comes about $370,000 less than what has been budgeted. So right now, we're currently under budget by a little bit. Do you want to throw a caveat in there? There could be something that we weren't expecting to spend money on that could come up. If you look under the projections row, you can see that communications piece. We didn't, we didn't plan for something like that. And to send out three letters to 15,000 members, we estimate that it'll be around $60,000. So if something else were to come up that we weren't prepared for, it could eat away at that, that budget that was allocated to this project. So, but otherwise, we, we feel like we're on a good path right now. Overall, with the, with the project, everything's on pace to meet that September 1st, 2024 deadline. As, as Shane knows, there's a lot of people working on this. A lot of time is going into it and more time will need to go into it as well as we get closer. But right now, we feel good with where we're at. And at this point, if you all have any questions, I'm, do my best to answer.
All right. Are there any questions for Mr. Cummings?
No, I've got some. Spencer knows I have some. I always have some. Just so I understand, on the chart that was about, like, slide number three, I think, that showed, you know, sort of the graphic about Empers, you mentioned at the, in the bottom dark blue, that OSTRS with 15,000 would become the third largest group. I guess I just, for my own purposes, are we, will we not be considered part of school? We will be a separate? Is that what the separate silo?
Correct.
Processes? Okay. So next time you send, show this to somebody, not next time, but a year from now, when you show this, OSTRS will be a separate item in that dark blue box?
Correct. Yep.
Okay. That's, I just want to make sure I understood that. The question on the project timeline, how do you know you're already behind by four
This would be a great question for our project manager. Well, there, there are certain questions that need to be answered so that we can move on to another step in this process.
Got it.
And so there are still some, there's still some information that we need before we can move on to the next step in this process. So that's where we're, we're still trying to get some of that information, and that's where we're behind a little bit.
At the bottom of that same chart, where you're talking about parallel testing and cut over activities, the notion of kind of almost having, being in contact with the recipients at the Empers level and at OSTRS level. I mean, so we, so we know it's matching and we know it's working. But it seemed to me that there was a question, like you said, about people that are leaving or retiring in May or at the end of this fiscal year. Is that part of your communication process? Is that part of your communication process or is that part of the cut over activities? How do like, like you said, how do they know who they're supposed to contact?
That would be a part of our communication activity. So once we can nail down a little bit more as to what needs to happen during that transition period, that will go out to the plan members and say, hey, this, if you want to do this, then you need to do this over here. So I would expect that would be in a communication.
Okay. A couple more. The member services department is where people can have appointments, come in, meet with people, so on and so forth. I understand that's going to be in Lincoln, right?
Correct.
And I don't think it'll come as a surprise to anybody that not having it be in Omaha was one of the main hurdles for people that are in the program already to, you know, sort of adjust. That was the biggest change. It wasn't the investments. It wasn't, you know, the necessarily the personnel that was having to go to Lincoln. I have a vague recollection that at one point, somebody said there might be a time, like monthly or something, when someone would act, would come to Omaha and be available to people. Is that, have I just made that up in my mind or am I confusing that with the seminars that you're talking about?
I'm not aware of any discussions of having someone come up here once a month, and maybe that is the seminars.
Or some regular, you know, six months or something.
And maybe there was discussion at some points. I just, I haven't been a part of that discussion since I've been on this project. But I do want to mention, not everyone wants to do a virtual seminar, or sorry, a virtual office visit, but we do offer those as well. Obviously, since we have members across the state of Nebraska, people out West, we we do offer a virtual seminar so we can just still meet with them and go over their specific accounts. So that would still be available to the OSERS members as well.
And and to be fair, I know that when we were in the middle of COVID, that we were able to continue to conduct this business without any office visits. So I know that it's not essential. I was just trying to clarify my own vague recollection. The communications, you say, we are sending these, we are sending the, you know, on these states, we, we. That's Empers and not us?
Correct.
Okay. My only other question about that, is that something that one of us, probably our administrator, looks at before it gets sent out?
Yeah, so once we finalize that, those communications, probably send send them to Shane to to review and make sure everything, we're on the same page before we send something out to, yeah, 15,000 people. So, yeah.
Last, not necessarily least, did you understand what Roger Ray was talking about?
Yes, so to those questions, yeah.
CPIW, CPIU, sending a notice ahead of time of the COLA adjustment and the January adjustment and the one and a half percent lifetime, those are all on somebody's to-do list, right?
Oh, yes. So, yeah, all those things we are aware of. But, yeah, so I do want to reiterate that OSERS obviously will remain its own plan. They have their own specific statutes that differ from the school plan that we currently administer. So nothing about the OSERS plan is changing in that regard. Everything, we have to follow statute, and that's how we are implementing the OSERS plan into our system by by what statute tells us what we have to do.
I guess the question is, and I don't know the answer, and we don't have to do it right now, but presumably, notwithstanding what the statute says, there was have been some practices that OSERS has undertaken over the course of 100 years. And I guess, do we know what those practices are? Now, I know some of them are changing, like sending paper checks. I know, I understand that. But if, for example, the COLA notice is not necessarily statutorily required, but it is something we've been doing, do we have a list of those practices and evaluate which ones we're keeping and which ones we're jettisoning?
Yeah, so we we do know the items that, you know, the little differences that might change once we take over administration. But for that specific case, anytime a member's benefit changes due to whether it's a COLA or the tax tables change, we send out a letter notifying them, hey, the next month's payment is going to be different. So unless you hear from us, nothing's changing. But once you do get a letter from us, that means something has changed, and we're telling you why it changed.
Okay, great.
But as far as all the other changes, yeah, well, we are keeping track of those. And I don't know if they'll all be communicated out, but the important ones will be for sure.
And I don't want to sick Roger on you, but you should probably assume you'll be hearing from him directly. Thank you very much. That's exactly what I needed to know.
All right. Are there additional questions?
Yeah, quick question. So it sounds like you're all on plan. If, is there anything that is concerning to you or anything that we should know about that might be an issue? Or like, if you don't stay on plan, what will be the thing that will get you off plan? Or maybe there isn't anything?
Other than the data migration, which Shane and I have been talking about, and we're going to put more resources into that, other than that, there aren't any alarms going off at this point. So if I'm aware of any, I'll be calling him for sure. So right now, everything is is on track.
Thank you.
You know, Mr. Herschenbach, certainly with anything, any project of significant size like this, porting the financial and records related to 15,000 members of a retirement plan, there are a lot of opportunity, opportunities for things to go sideways. We've had a couple of those instances already. Early on in August and September, we had some concerns that we were starting to fall behind. That's when we established set weekly meetings twice a week between OSERS, Empers, OPS, and Linea and the vendor. Just this week, Tyler and my, Mr. Cummings and myself, along with Mr. Dunn from our IMS team, and also Empers IMS staff, met and talked about how we can address being behind four weeks on the data migration. The district has engaged a third-party vendor that specializes in the PeopleSoft Retirement Pension Module that we've been leveraging on a infrequent basis, I would say, at this point in time. But we've made the determination that we need to have them more involved on a more regular basis. And so certainly, the district is very committed to making sure that we provide all the necessary information, whether that be the actual data or processing of process flows within the system for Empers to be able to implement the system that they'll utilize and configure it appropriately in court, in accordance with statute and business processes.
Yeah, thank you. It's the depth is in the details. Like, you can get 99.99% of the things right, and you miss that one little bit, and it can cause a lot of problems. So it sounds like you're on it, though. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much for coming. It sounds like you've got a great plan and things are moving along, so we appreciate it.
Thanks for having me.
All right. So next on the agenda, we've got a couple items for discussion or action by the OSERS Board of Trustees. The first is, Mr. Ryan will go through the meeting schedule for 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Born. Put together a tentative schedule for meetings of the trustees in 2024. Again, trying to keep to a quarterly cadence as we have in for the majority of 2023. The next quarterly meeting proposed would be on Thursday, March 7th, the first Thursday in March, followed by Thursday, June 6th, at which point in time we would receive a report from Kavanaugh McDonald for the annual valuation as of January 1, 2024. And then we'll have a 60-day window between before the next meeting and probably, quite possibly, the last meeting of the trustees on Thursday, August 1st, just to have that final update on the transition that we are planning to have be very successful.
Everybody make note of those meeting dates?
Will there be pizza at that last one?
I would be more than happy to buy pizza, Ms. Erdenberger.
We've got $300,000 to spare, so, right?
Don't tell, don't tell.
Mr. Ray would not be pleased if I spent that on pizza.
I just jinxed it.
All right. Seeing no further pizza discussions, Mr. Ryan's going to go through an administrator's update.
Can we have a motion and a second to and a vote to adopt the meeting schedule?
All righty. Thank you. I'll take a motion on the 2024 meeting schedule. Motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Ryan, would you take the roll?
Mr. Born?
Yes.
Ms. Erdenberger?
Yes.
Ms. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Head?
Yes.
Mr. Herschenbach?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
And I apologize, I was trying to find the right page. Who made the motion? Mr. Head, thank you. And who seconded? Ms. Johnson, thank you.
All right, it is approved. Make note of those dates. Now we'll move on to Mr. Ryan and the administrator update.
I think everybody in the room has a copy of the presentation, so we'll just forego Apologies. Technology in strange rooms, as always, a crapshoot. So the first thing on the update is information on the legislature's retirement committee hearings. The retirement committee had two hearings, one yesterday afternoon at 1:00 on underfunded pension statuses, and this morning at 9:00 AM on audit findings related to the OSERS audit. We were one of seven political subdivisions, interestingly, all from Douglas County, that had to report to the legislature on having underfunded pension plans, i.e., a funding status below 80%. Largely, the conversation in general with the plans while we were there revolved around making ARC payments and commitments to keeping the funding going on those. I gave some brief testimony and answered a question from Senator Merman regarding our commitment to continue to meet the ARC payment as a district. And I reinforced and reiterated that we are 100% committed as a district to making that actuarially required ARC payment on an annual basis moving forward. And if funds and budget are allowable to making additional contributions above and beyond that as practical. But we did include in our testimony the concern that as the ARC payment does increase based on the assumed rate of return decreasing over the next three years, it will be problematic for the district to continue to make contributions in excess of the ARC payment. But largely, that testimony went very well. This morning, Mr. Zach Wells, the Audit Manager, who signed the Nebraska Auditor of Public Accounts Audit Report, provided testimony and an update to the Retirement Committee on the status of the audit. He went through some of the basic financial information, noted that it was an unmodified opinion, meaning the financial statements were materially correct. And then he went through and talked about some of the larger findings and recommendations. One of the things that he did highlight was the unexpected retirements of Mr. Ellis and Ms. Carter last year, and the fact that as we look at the findings that we did have, many of those were related to the lack of, the loss, excuse me, of institutional knowledge with the departure of those individuals and the challenges that that did cause us in the second half of 2022 and during the actual audit process. I gave an update on corrective actions that have been taken thus far on the audit report and discussed again some more, some additional comments regarding the ARC payment. And there were also a, there was also a carryover question about the district's levy and the amount of revenue that was somewhat unrelated to the retirement report, but it was a way for the question to be asked and a response given. Overall, the testimony went very positively, and I think I will paraphrase Ms. Conrad, Senator Conrad, excuse me, from Lincoln, who's on the Retirement Committee. This is a lot of messy stuff that happened because you had some people leave, and I didn't see anything in the audit report that indicated any fraud, waste, or abuse. And I reaffirm that was correct. You know, we are, as plan members ourselves, we're working diligently to administer the plan. It didn't turn, last year didn't turn out the way we had hoped or desired, and we are committed to working towards making sure that the plan is administered. And we have a very successful transition to Empers. And I think the retirements of Ms. Carter and Mr. Ellis underscored the importance of LB 147 and transferring administration to Empers, and their 60-plus staff members and the expertise they have in administering retirement plans. Any questions on that before I move on? Yes, ma'am?
Just a quick question. And I know that how much we're underfunded is... Oh, you want me to do that? Okay. I know that how much we're underfunded is as much of a crapshoot as some of the other stuff. Just at one point in time, how many retirees do we have? What's our investments? What's our assumed reinvestment rate? I mean, all of that. But roughly, what what was our underfunded percentage that we were reporting on yesterday?
So the underfunded status is in the high 50s. Low 60s. I apologize, I should know that number off the top of my head. 1.1 billion dollars.
It's probably different today than it was yesterday anyway, so, okay. Thank you.
We'll have some good news for that later on in the administrators' report.
Excellent, okay.
Okay.
I'll hang tight.
The next item. I don't think it likes me. The next item on the administrator's update, Mr. Maranti, the former state treasurer and now executive director of Empers, did reach out to me last week to inquire about a couple pieces of potential legislation that they are considering, including as part of their annual package of new legislation to submit. One of those is to appoint an ex-officio non-voting OSERS member to the PERB board. They are anticipating an emergency clause related to that, which means it would take effect immediately upon signature by the governor. The thought process behind that is it would potentially be an opportunity to get an OSERS member on the board during the legislative session, approved by the legislature and the governor, and thus become a voting member on September 1st, 2024, versus appointing someone to the PERB in August or early September and having them be non-voting until January at the earliest, when the legislature would reconvene. I think the general consensus would be that that's a, that's a great plan of attack in order to get someone on the board and be able to vote as soon as practical. The second piece that he inquired about or let me know about was, we currently have in our statutes that if there is a retirement seminar held, you must be at least 50 years of age to take the paid day off work to go to that retirement seminar. That was also a provision in the state teachers' plan for many, many years, but that has been struck. So that does allow someone early or mid-career to go get some retirement advice with some practical time to be, to action on that versus waiting until the fourth quarter to start thinking about retirement. You know, really, the only concern from a district perspective is that's potentially a substitute day and a day for a staff member outside of a school building. But to align with the state teachers' plan and how they provide information to their members, we seem, we think that that would be a good change to make legislatively to align those plans. Any questions on either of those?
Just a real quick one. So if a person is appointed to the PERB board outside of the
the legislative session, so what this, what you're saying is they can't vote until they're approved by the legislature? Is that kind of how that works?
Correct. So if we, if there were no action and statute is how it is, it is likely that the governor's office would not necessarily nominate someone until August or September. And without confirmation by the legislature, they would not be able to vote because they would not have been confirmed. So they would be more of a pro temp member at that point in time. As the OSERS administrator, I sit on the Nebraska Investment Council as an ex officio member. We did have a new, new voting member come on to the Investment Council in December of 2022. And it wasn't until March that he was able to actually vote at meetings after his confirmation by the legislature.
Thank you. I wasn't aware of that requirement.
Next slide we have here is just an update on the monthly changes in the pension benefit payments out to retirees. So the top half of the table shows, starts with how much we sent out in retirement payments in the previous month, how much we sent out in additional new payments, how many stop payments there were, and how many, the amount of the change in payments, and the net difference with the ending amount actually distributed for that month. The bottom half of the table presents the total number of recipients and those similar changes, so you can get a sense of how many individuals. You'll note that in October, the amount was much more significant than the subsequent months, and total recipients changed was also very significant. And that corresponds with the medical COLA that's due on October 1st for all members with 10 or more years of retirement.
How does that change recipients?
Total recipients with a changed amount of payment.
Okay. Oh, I see.
So 2,395 recipients had a change in the amount of their payment. 90-some percent of that would have been directly related to the COLA. On the next slide, refunds processed between September and November, there were 78 total refunds, $936,663.71 in contribution, and $119,072.70 in interest. Those numbers will be much larger next time. We are currently working on getting the December refund payments out, which will be approximately 140 individuals that separated at the end of August. And apologies on the small print. Here are the October 31 financial statements for OSERS. I would draw your attention to the bottom line, the total liabilities and net, or excuse me, the total assets, $1.545 billion. That is up almost $100 million from the previous year. As we'll see here in about two more slides, the investment returns have been very favorable this year, in stark contrast to the very unfavorable returns during calendar year 2022. So we are moving back in the right direction after a disappointing investment turn, return environment. I think it's due worth noting, it is worth noting that in 2022, the only segment of the finance market that had any positive rate of return was commodities. And this year, commodities are the only segment of the market that have a negative rate of return, per the Nebraska Investment Council and Aon. So everything is cyclical. The following page is the statement of changes in net fiduciary assets. I would note that total additions for the current month were a negative $16.5 million due to some adjustments in August and investment activity of $25.6 million. Total deductions, $13.127 million. Retirement year-to-date deductions have been $25.9 million. Previous year was $25.4 million. So approximately $500,000 more dollars in deductions and annuity payments year-to-date than the previous year. The last slide, this is a presentation from Aon, the investment advisor to the Nebraska Investment Council. As of September 30th, the market value of the portfolio was $1,479 million. This was a decrease of $6.2 million, or approximately 0.42%. That's highlighted by the negative 2% return for the quarter, the preceding three months. Unfortunately, it was a rocky summer in the investment markets. But overall fiscal year-to-date, the investment portfolio return was 4.4%, which was about 1.2% higher than the Nebraska Investment Council's policy index that they monitor for comparison purposes. For a calendar year period, the portfolio was up 11.7%. That was in the 13th percentile of all investment portfolios in the country. So the smaller the number there, the better we are doing. So the Investment Council has done yeoman's work in maximizing our returns based on their very conservative, conservative investment strategies. And then the three-year rate of return, smoothing that out a little bit, is 6.4%, which is still about 1.1% above the policy index that indexes that they benchmark to. So overall, they are doing great work on that. Had the great pleasure today, or excuse me, yesterday of wishing Michael Walden Newman, the retiring state investment, investment officer, farewell and best of luck in retirement, and meeting Ms. Ellen Hung, the new state investment officer who comes to the NIC from a retirement, state retirement plan in Illinois. She has 30-plus years in retirement plan investment, and also short-term cash management pools in several municipal and state and local locations throughout the country, including California, Washington State, most recently, Illinois. And I think she did a stint in Hawaii, and I'm not sure why anyone would ever leave Hawaii. But we are happy to have her and think that she will do a great job managing the OSERS and all the other state assets moving forward. I would like to take a moment and go off script. We will be awarding the regular COLAs on the January 3 benefit payment per statute. Mr. Ray inquired about, Mr. Roger Ray, to differentiate, inquired about whether or not we would be doing the COLA on the state service annuity per the state auditor's recommendation. In consultation with the Npers, we have determined that we will not be doing that, and potentially seeking a change in legislation to better define that. Upon review, the actuarial amounts and the amounts contributed by the state for that state service annuity did not contemplate any type of cost of living adjustment. So essentially, that would be unfunded at this point in time. And so that is the stance we are currently taking on that. And we will work with Npers to get that rectified and statute or clarified. But after discussions with the actuaries and looking through that, the amounts that we currently receive from the state for the state service annuity do not contemplate a beneficiary after the passing of the member, and they do not contemplate a COLA amount over the lifetime of that individual. So we will not be enacting that recommendation, and we'll ultimately probably seek some legislative change to clarify that based on established practice.
Just confirming on this last, on the last page about the investments, that the policy index is what the NIC was kind of shooting for, but it's not the same as our assumed rate of return, which is working its way towards 7%, right?
No, that, that is correct. So basically, this is a portfolio-level benchmark performance. So for your bonds, your different times of financial instruments, they have specific indices that they benchmark against, i.e. the S&amp;P 500 or the Russell 3000 Index. And so this is a compilation of that based on the allocation of our portfolio.
So our ARC is based on the 7.5% or I can't remember where we're at right now, or where we're sliding down to?
So the ARC payment is a function of the amount of the investments available, and the expected rate of return of future investments, and the expected lifetime of the beneficiaries receiving those investments. So this, these are different than the assumed rate of return in the actuaries. But anything above 7%, 7.5% on there is good news for us as a plan.
Great. Thank you. Now, the question that you said that we determined that the statute does not interpret it to provide that, I'm going to call it the lifetime COLA, just as a shorthand, to pretend that I understand what we're talking about. Is that a statute? And is that only, only OSERS? Or when you say going back to getting some legislation, do all of the plans need that change to be made?
So the state service annuity is something specific to OSERS for the pre-2016 members. And the auditor's opinion is utilizing a more general retirement system statute to say that there should be a COLA on that. We had differing legal opinions, but ultimately, the auditor is going to include what they want to include in their report based on their opinion. We were unable to provide them something that convinced them that they should change their opinion. And so we feel the best way to address that moving forward in consultation with Npers is to get statute clarified. But based on what has been contributed to the portfolio by the state for that annuity, those amounts did not contemplate a COLA.
Additional questions for Mr. Ryan? All right. Seeing none. Do we need a motion to accept your report?
No, sir.
All right. Okay. So with that, that'll conclude the agenda, with the exception of announcing again the next meeting. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Omaha School Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees will be held on Thursday, March 7th, 2024, at 4:00 PM in the board meeting room of the Teacher Administrative Center. 3215 coming. If there's a change to the room, we'll make sure that there's a notice outside that room, but should be ready to go by then.
Should be ready.
The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the retirement office at the Teacher Administrative Building during regular working hours. With that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Ray, second by, uh, roll call, Mr. Ryan?
Mr. Born?
Yes.
Ms. Erdnberger?
Yes.
Ms. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Head?
Yes.
Mr. Hirschenbach?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray. Six eyes.
I will, thanks. How are you doing?